You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning all my Gwinishes out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world. Listen to the sound of my voice. It is a beautiful winter day here in Gwinnett County. Thirty-seven degrees going up to a high of a nice fifty-four with a clear sky. So it's gonna be a beautiful day. So you still need your jacket on. Don't go out there and get, take your jacket off because it's gonna be beautiful. It's not that beautiful. But you know, it's so crazy because I remember, I remember my brother, uh, my, my brother does this to this day. Like he'll have on a coat and some shorts. Like, okay, so what's the purpose of having on a coat if you got on shorts? But my nephew do the same thing. They have on coats and they have on shorts. I just, I don't get it, but hey, it is what it is. But listen, don't put no shorts on, don't you gonna be stopped up like I am. Um, I think I got a head cold, y'all. Because the only thing bothers me is my nose. And you probably can hear it in the sound of my voice right now, but there's nothing I can do. So I had a choice. Do I not come on and do my show because I sound ilky? Or do I do my show and, and I sound ilky and do it anyway? Yes, I'm gonna do it anyway. I'm gonna do it anyway. So that's what it is. I'm hope you're having a month of, uh, wonderful day. It's Wednesday, hump day, baby. You have made it to the middle. Yes, you have. Yeah, listen, I know y'all praying, I know some of y'all are praying for Friday. I get it. Honestly, y'all, I'm kinda praying for Thursday. Uh, and you know, I don't ever pray for a day. I just wanna, I need a day to relax. My, my week has been non-stop. I'm talking about Sunday, when I was supposed to be resting, I worked pretty much all day. Uh, Monday, I had meeting after meeting. Tuesday, I had meeting after meeting. I had, I have a photo shoot today and then a meeting. I'm, I'm just, I'm exhausted and I just need a minute to rest because I'm so, my head is so clogged up. You know, it's like my sinuses, it's weird because it feels like allergy season. That's what it really, my ears itching, like one ear, the ear that always itch during allergy seasons is my right ear. That ear is itching and my, and my nose is clogged up. And I don't care what I've taken so far, my nose is still clogged up. So it feel like allergies, it don't even feel like a cold. It feel like every, you know, like, and the spreading, my allergies flare up, which I used to never have allergies. It's so crazy because I remember, I was like, what is wrong with me? Because I never had allergies. Like I've had friends who suffered terribly because of allergies. I didn't have allergies, but then later on in life, I developed allergies. And then out, they would happen in September, right? They would happen in September, I would have like these huge allergy flare ups. So this is what this feels like, but when it, when your head is clogged up and you're like me, where you need to think and you need to be on the move all time, it, it kinda slows you down. So I just really wanna rest. I ain't gonna even, I ain't gonna even front y'all. I just wanna like take a minute and just rest. But I got a full day today, photo shoot, and then I got a full day tomorrow, including bowling. Hopefully I feel better by bowling tomorrow. Um, and then Saturday, Friday, I think Friday, Friday, I got my networking event. So listen, if you're in the metro Atlanta area, metro Gwinnett area, if you wanna come out and network, God, I hope I feel better. Uh, because my networking event, the Good Morning Gwinnett Breakfast Club, I don't even think I told you guys about this. Did I tell y'all? But anyway, I'm hosting a mastermind twice a month called Gwinnett Business, Gwinnett Business Breakfast Club, Breakfast Club. Gwinnett Business Breakfast Club. And twice a month, the second and fourth Friday of each month, we get together and we mastermind over breakfast. So if you got business challenges, um, you're welcome to come out and hang out with us. We're gonna be at the Peachtree Cafe located at thirty South Clayton Street, um, in Lawrenceville, Georgia. So it's downtown where they built all the new houses and things down there. It's right on the corner. It used to be Peachtree Cafe that was in the middle, right next to the, what is that? The, 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 not the, is the courthouse? I think it was a courthouse. I don't know what that is, but it's right on Clayton Street. So it's, it's new, it's really nice in there too, y'all. So, uh, we're gonna be in that back room and they got a, they got a private room back there. We're gonna be in the back room. So if you wanna have breakfast, come out and join us Monday, I mean, Monday, this coming Friday at eight o'clock, we're gonna, if you wanna eat breakfast, come at eight o'clock. We start at eight-thirty sharp. So if you know you wanna eat breakfast, then you need to show up at eight o'clock. Because we start at eight-thirty sharp and we're gonna be out there by ten-thirty. So if you have a, an issue with your business or you just wanna network, come out. But it's really to mastermind and to help you, um, help you try to overcome whatever challenges you may be having in your business. So it's a twice a month mastermind meeting. It's business over breakfast. Eight o'clock, we start so you can get your breakfast. If you don't, if you know you're not gonna get breakfast, just be there by eight-thirty because we start at eight-thirty. Each, we hope, the goal is to make sure that everybody get a chance to put their issues on the table so we can throw out some solutions to the issues. So that'd be a great opportunity for you. So be sure to come out, uh, the second and fourth Friday of each month, eight a.m. If you wanna eat breakfast, eight-thirty. If you don't wanna eat breakfast, but if you wanna eat breakfast, try to get there a little bit early. So you can order your breakfast and get it to the table by eight-thirty because we start, I'm, I'm, I'm an on-time kinda person. So if I'm not there, know something is wrong. I don't like being late. And so if you get there and I'm not there, go to the back room, but know that something is wrong. And if you get there before me, then go ahead and start it up, okay? Alright, so yeah, so that's what, that's what we got going on. So again, and then, then on Saturday, I gotta teach a class. I gotta teach a, I gotta teach a four-week workshop called Her Startup. It is for, um, a nonprofit organization called, um, By Faith Global Ministries. And she is the owner, um, Pastor Barbara Green is the director and founder of By Faith, By Faith Global Ministries. And her goal is to help women and underserved populations and communities learn how to start their own business. So the class is, which is pretty cool, is virtual. It was originally supposed to be in, um, in person, but because of everything that's going on, it's virtual. And so we got students in Tennessee, Mississippi, and Georgia taking the class. And that's Saturday. So I'll be doing that on Saturday. So see, my schedule is full. Now this coming Sunday, I will definitely take a break after I do popcorn and politics, of course. That's my podcast I do on Sunday. Yes, I do another podcast on Sunday, so. Oh, I know, I need to take a break, right? I need to take a breath. I do, I really wanna just lay down. I think what I'm gonna do after the photo shoot is just really, after the photo shoot, my, my last meeting, I think I'm gonna take a minute and just relax and lay down for a second. Alright, let's get on with the show. Today is National Curry Chicken Day. Curry Chicken Day. So if you like curry chicken, go ahead and do your thing. Um, I had never eaten curry before. I think I finally ate curry probably about five years ago in my entire life. And when I ate it, I fell in love with it. I was like, oh my God, this is really good. But I used to like, I don't want no curry chicken. And my daughter, she likes all that kinda stuff. She like curry chicken, she like curry everything. She like all kinda spicy and, uh, 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 cultural foods and I don't. Now I pretty much like, I pretty much like, uh, crabs and shrimp and lobster. That's pretty much what I wanna eat all the time, but I can't eat that all the time because I'm sure it's not good for me. But anyway, she brought me some curry chicken and some, I think the bread is called nun. I fell in love with that. I was like, oh, this is really good. So I fell in love with curry chicken. So if you like curry chicken, today is National Curry Chicken Day. It's also National Kiss a Ginger Day. Now, I don't know what the heck a ginger is, but it's Kiss a Ginger Day. What is that? Who made that day up? Tell you, people just be making them, I gotta make up my own day. I swear I do. I keep saying it, but I keep forgetting. I need to, I need to set a, a note on my phone to alarm, set up a prayer today. It's also National Marzipan Day. Don't know what that is. I don't know what marzipan is. It sound like a medicine. You know what I'm saying? It sound like some kinda pharmaceutical medicine. National Marzipan, I need to look that up. It's National Pharmacist Day. So show your pharmacist some love, go to the pharmacy, hey. Do you wanna, just wanna show you some love today for National Pharmacist Day? Alright, let's get on with these Horus goals. Brought to you by Notre D'Strada, Michael Thieson for today, January the twelfth. Alright, we gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries. Sudden changes at home will affect family members more than you anticipated. Someone close to you may need your help. Don't overdo it. Sudden changes at home is gonna affect your family members. I don't know what those changes are, Aries, but try to be prepared for them. You know, try to be prepared to help the family members that need you at home, um, but don't overdo it. You can't, I know you wanna be the hero for everybody, but don't overdo it, okay? Just try to, just handle it, but don't overdo it. Taurus, be an observer before getting involved. A change of attitude has probably disrupted home environment, your home environment. Read between the lines with signing contracts. Okay, y'all know what I always say about signing a contract, right? Read between the lines, yes. But if you don't understand what you're reading between the lines, consult a professional Taurus. Do not read between the lines and make up stuff that you think is correct. Get the correct answer. Because what you don't wanna do is sign because you thought you understood. Now you done sound the way your life, your house, your car, the keys, everything. Don't do that. That could cost you dearly. Gemini, however, you should be concerned about what they want in return. Take time to look at an outdated paper or possible investments. Try to understand their point of view. Alright, listen, they want something from you, right? They, they, they're giving you something, Gemini, but you need to understand, you know, you should be concerned. What do they wanna return? Because they want something. Yeah, it sounds like they wanna help you out. They probably do, but what do they want? They want something. Don't go thinking, oh, it's just me, I'm the greatest, that's why they doing it. Nah, nah, nah. Nah, 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 nah. They want something. And you need to be concerned about whatever that is. Don't be think, because you know, some people just got them, they, oh my God, they say I'm the best. Oh my God, they like my work. Oh my, yeah, they want something. Ask them what it is. Because you need to be concerned, Gemini. Cancer, emotionally, you won't see things accurately. Travel should be on your mind. You may be the recipient, recipient of false information. Watch where you get your information from today, cancer. Watch it. Somebody is giving you some false information. Don't run with it until you know if it's true or not. And chances are, if it's that, if it's something like that, you probably don't need to even be indulging in the conversation in the first place. I'm just trying to help you out. Yeah, and emotionally, you're not gonna see things clearly. I know you wanna travel, it's on your mind, I get it. We all wanna go somewhere, especially now when it's cold. Everybody wanna go where the sun is. Not everybody, because some people love the cold. Some people like being in the cold. That happens not to be me. That, but I don't like being in the sun either. So I'm kinda in the middle. Like I like fall and spring where it's nice. Some people like the hot, 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 not me. Some people like the cold, 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 not me. I'm in the middle. Give me fall and spring any day. I don't care about the beaches as much unless I just wanna sit on them and watch the waves. Yeah, not so much. And I definitely don't care about the snow. No, okay. Leo, try not to get upset or angry without having all the facts. You may attract attention if you get out socially. Refuse to let others make unrealistic demands on you. Yeah, try not to get upset or angry until you have all the facts. Not some of the facts, Leo, all of them. Because you don't wanna get upset for no reason. You don't wanna be angry for no reason. You don't wanna be angry because somebody gave you the wrong information. Get all the facts. And even when you get the facts, try not to get angry. I know, easier said than done when you went, when somebody says something that you don't like or did something that you don't like. I know it's easier said than done, but try. If anything, try, okay? Virgo, you can accomplish a lot if you direct your thoughts toward starting your own small business on the side. Y'all know I love that. You know I love that. Love can be yours if you get out and about. Joint ventures might prove to be unfavorable. Ooh, let me tell y'all something. I have a friend right now who's going through HE double hockey sticks because of a joint venture that she got involved in. I'm gonna say this to you. I'm gonna say this to you. If you decide to start your own small business, Virgo, and I'm not gonna go off on a tangent because you know I can when it comes to small business talk. If you decide to start your own business, right? And you're thinking about taking on a partner, you may wanna think twice about that. Because here's what happens. If you take on a partner and they have a greedy nature and they try to stab you in the back, if they have an ego problem, they could try to stab you in the back. You know, some people, they jump on the wagon. They, you, you think they're coming up because they really love you and wanna help you do something, right? But they really see an opportunity for themselves. And when the opportunity open up for them to kick you out, oh, they will. Trust me when I tell you that, oh, they would kick you out if they could. But if you're smart, you hold all the cards and you can never get kicked out. But here's what happens. It destroys the relationship. It destroys the company. It destroys the thing that you put your blood, sweat, and tears in. So I would say to you, Virgo, be very careful and think very, very hard about bringing on a partner or doing a joint venture. If anything, hire people. Let me say that again. Before you decide to bring on, do a joint venture or do partnerships with people, hire somebody. Because when you hire people, you can fire them. When you bring them on in your business as a partner or as a joint venture, you're in there pretty much equally, right? Even if it's not equal, anytime, any type of partnership gives them ownership, that could be a problem later on. Especially if they have ill intentions. Especially if they're egomaniacs, especially if they're greedy. And you don't know if they're greedy in nature because they'd do anything for money. Your heart may be one place, but theirs is not. And the minute somebody presents the opportunity to them, they forget all about you. Let me say that again. The minute somebody presents the opportunity to them, they forget about you. Even if you brought them into the business, they will forget about you and try to push you out of your own business. So watch yourself. Uh, do you, do you, do your thing on the side. Start your side hustle, but be very careful about joint ventures and partnerships, very, very careful. I have a friend right now, she's going through, she's going through it. Because what started out as a hobby for her became a business with a joint venture. And then the partner decided she wanted to leave, but she really wanted the business, which is crazy, right? And because my friend didn't wanna give up the business, now she talking about getting a lawyer. See, the ugly side of me would be like, F you. Excuse me, I know this is a family show, y'all. But I'd be like, F you, do what you gotta do. That would be me, right? Or I'll let the whole business fall. I've done that before. I've let my whole business just crash. But I did that to save the relationship. Because I felt like it was worth saving. But you learn valuable lessons like that. You learn valuable lessons when things like that happen. So I don't really do, I, I don't really do partnerships anymore. Because they can be very, very difficult. Even with my husband, like we talk about things, but we can't do a partnership together because I feel like that would destroy our marriage. Because I'm really, they know that when I'm in it, I'm in it. Like I'm in it one hundred percent and I don't wanna have to be mad at you because you're really not in it because your heart is not in it. You know, and his heart is always in a good place. But when it comes to doing this thing right here, this is what I do on a daily basis. This is my life. He has a job. This ain't his life. So we don't, we don't do joint ventures because I love my husband and I value my marriage. You know, we tried to do some things together, but I'm totally serious about that stuff. And he, he'll be serious for like a hot second and then he's not. And I'm like, see? So what I've learned, what I've learned over the years is, yep, don't ask him to do any joint ventures. Would you ask him to help you? That he'll do. He's gonna help you if you ask him to. If you tell him what you need helping, he's gonna help you. Don't ask him to be a partner. I don't ask anybody to partner with me for real. Because it just, it could, it could cause a lot of problems, Virgo. So just be very careful. Start your side hustle, right? But be very, very careful about joint ventures because they could be unfavorable. Alright, I'm going to a song. I'll be right, right back after this song to give you more of the Horus goals. Brought to you by Notre D'Strada, Michael Thieson. Stay tuned.
Say it again, say it again. You're saying you're sorry, so say it again. Only you can make my world go black. Say you love me, then you take it back. Say it again, say it again. You want my forgiveness, so say it again. You're my thunder, my darkest night. You just can't go back and make it right. Cause it's too late, your time is up. Damage done and now we're stuck. Cause it's too late, you roll the dice. And now you have to pay the price. Yeah. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry, no. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry, no. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one. Say it again, say it again. You're saying you feel bad, so say it again. Only you can do that. My heart was open wide. I could feel it breaking deep inside. Cause it's too late, your time is up. Damage done and now we're stuck. Cause it's too late, you roll the dice. And now you have to pay the price. Oh. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry, no. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry, no. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry, no. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one. I'm in a better place now. I'm not gonna worry. I'm not even sorry, you're gonna be the lonely one.
Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the daily Horus goals. Brought to you by Notre D'Strada, Michael Thieson. Before I get on, I, you know, I just thought about something. And I need you to think seriously about this, um, Virgo. And I know I left off talking about Virgo and I'm supposed to be picking up with Aries, but, I mean, Libra. But I just had to say this, think about this for a second. And what made me think about this was, uh, I was talking about my friend. So you build something that could be amazing. Think about this for a second. You build something that could be amazing. You have a partner, it's going well, it could be amazing. And then the partner decides that I want this to be all about me. I see that it's becoming amazing. I want it to be all about me. I don't want you to be involved for real. And so they're doing side deals on the side, they're having side conversations on the side. And the thing that you were building that's amazing now just crumbles apart. I'll never do that again, y'all. Listen, my friend is going through that right now. She has built, uh, she and her partner have built up a wonderful podcast that's doing amazing. And because the partner decide I want it by myself, now the whole thing is probably gonna crumble. After a year of just being amazing, it's gonna crumble. I've been there. I, I think about where my, it's so funny. When I started my dog company, that was the thing that I stayed focused on the most, right? And when I, when I struggled with being focused, I go back to the dog company. Because when I had the dog company, all I did was focus on the dog company. It was later in life when I realized I could be anything and whoever I wanted to be. And that became, it was almost like a problem. Because then I could focus on many other things, which didn't help me because now it's all over the place. But I think back to say, where would I have been if I would've kept that company going? But I decided to let the company die to save a friendship. I'll never do that again. And I would suggest to you that when you think about bringing on anybody in your business, think real hard about that. I tell you, hire that person or hire somebody to help you get done what you need to get done. It's great when you have people you could talk to in the business. It's absolutely wonderful. But you can talk to an employee. You can. You can bring someone to employee. You can do it in a networking group, right? You love, you could hire people to do the things that you don't, you're not good at, you don't like. But when you think about bringing in a partner, you could let a, a business could take a nosedive for the worst. If the partner loses sight of why you guys got together. And, and that's what happens. And that's what has happened to my friend. She has a great company that was going, it was growing. They were writing about them and all of a sudden, her partner did a three-sixty. She wanted it all for herself. But that's greedy. That's greedy. And when people are not on the same page with you, you have options. What do you do? If you own the company one hundred percent, you do what you wanna do, right? Right? But when you have partners, now you have to decide. Do I keep the company? Do I keep the friendship? Do I get rid of both? Do I get rid of one? What do you do? Right? I got rid of my, my company. I let my company crumble. I will never do that again. You know why? Because I will never have a partner again. And I would suggest, if you thinking about having a partner, you think real hard. Because my friend right now is going through a lot of pain because she brought on a partner who she thought was on the same page with her. And the partner was not. So I just, I felt like I needed to say that because I think back twenty-one years, twenty-two now, of where that company could have been, had I kept it going, right? I'm sure my friend is gonna look back years from now and wonder what his company could have been if I had kept it going. Now she, now she's at a point she has to decide what she's gonna do with the company. And it's tough because you, you're doing something that you love, you're creating something amazing. And then you get people who challenge you and who, who, who want to, they got ego problems and they got greed problems. And you know, they forget that you brought them into the company. And then they wanna kick you in the back and do things behind your back. And now she gotta figure out what she gonna do with the company. I would suggest very, very strongly that before you take a partner, hire somebody. That's, that's, and I, I just had to say that because I think back on where my company would have been twenty-two years later. Twenty-two years, y'all. And, and we were, we were doing it way before the internet was big. Like I can't even imagine where, if I had stayed the course and, and grown that business for the last twenty-two years, where would it have been right now? Where would I have been right now? But I, I let the company die. I'll never do that again, ever. I'll never take a partner again, ever. Anyway, Libra, if you can't trust someone, question the connection. Oh my God, how about that? How about that, y'all? That was Libra. Libra, part of that message was for you. If you can't trust someone, question the connection. The locks, the stove, the gas, or the electric wires may not be secure. You will back yourself into a corner if you are baited and stubbornness will only make matters worse. Yeah, Libra, I, all, I ain't got nothing else to say. If you can't trust someone, question the connection. That's all I'm gonna say on that one. Part of that message that I just gave Virgo was for you. Mm-hmm, I know it was. Somebody need to hear it. Somebody need to hear that message. Scorpio, you'll be looking for creative ways to make a little extra cash. Alright, here we go again. Do your homework if you can. Someone may be trying to make you look bad. Don't ruffle feathers if possible. Alright, listen, you looking for some creative ways to make some extra cash? It's, it's, it's millions out there. It's millions. But here's what I would say, Scorpio. Don't just look for luck, creative ways. Look for creative ways that light you up. Creative ways that make you happy to make the extra cash, right? It was so funny, I don't know if I told this story last week, but I was, um, people always tell me to do courses. I hate doing like recorded courses. Like I suck at that. And I think I told the story, but someone had said to me, hey, you could hire somebody to do that for you. And I could, right? The lady told me eight thousand dollars. I'm like, really? Eight thousand dollars, huh? Now I could sit down here and do it myself or I could pay somebody eight thousand dollars or I could just not do it at all. I had a choice. And so I decided, well, you know what? I'm gonna write a book. That I know I could do. And it ain't, you know, I like doing it, I can do it. I ain't gotta pay eight thousand dollars for it. Anyway, so whatever it is, you know, find a way that's gonna make you happy. That's, that was the, that was the whole, uh, point to that, that conversation. Sagittarius, you will be ready to jump on anyone who gets in the way of your progress today. Now listen here, Sagittarius, before you jump on somebody, now don't hurt nobody. Cause you gonna go to jail and you ain't gonna make no progress, alright? You will have an interest in foreigners and their cultures. You may have difficulties finishing projects you start. Stay focused. If you having difficulties, is it something that you're passionate about? Are you doing it for the wrong reasons? That's why you can't stay focused. That's why you having difficulties finishing the project. You're not really into it. Not that project, okay? Be listen, be honest with yourself Sagittarius, when you struggle, you need to ask your question, do I really like what I'm doing, is it something really important to me? Ask yourself that question, Capricorn, try to deal with problems of those less fortunate, however. Don't allow them to make unreasonable demands, do the necessary chores and then do things that please you, you can't help, listen, you can't help everyone cap. You can't, you can't help everyone, right, so don't, don't try. Cause everybody, even the people you feel like you you know you can't help, they probably don't want your help, they just wanna live in their misery and wallow in their pity. Can't help everybody, yes, I'm trying to help you out, Aquarius. Family outings that aren't expensive will be enjoyable and help strengthen ties, get help to finish a project if you need it. You've been stagnating for some time now and you need a change of pace. Yes, listen, ask for help, Aquarius, I know you don't wanna ask anybody because you got so much pride. And you don't want people to think you don't know what you're doing, you don't want people to think that you're weak, but listen to this, you are weak if you don't ask for help. Because you need the help, ask, it's okay, people have asked you for help, ask. You'd be surprised, people will step up to help you, now don't ask the wrong person. The ones that don't never help nobody, they probably gonna help you, then you gonna be disappointed, ask somebody else, I'm just saying. Last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces, problems with large corporations or institutions are apparent. Get the master choice out of the way early, the experience will be good. Alright Fish, I don't know what that means, problems with large corporations and institutions are apparent, keep your fish senses open. I don't know what that mean, they said they said problems are apparent, that means you gotta be on, you gotta be aware. To keep your fit, keep your fish radar up, keep your fish antenna up, keep your fish fin up. But be aware of the problem, it's gonna be apparent, but it's not apparent if you're not paying attention, let me say that again. The problem will not be apparent if you are not paying attention and clean your house up, get it done early. Yes, get it out the way, once you get it out the way, then it's done, don't procrastinate because you don't know who gonna stop by. And your house gonna be dirty, I'm just trying to help you, I'm just trying to help you out, I'm just trying to help you out. That's all I'm trying to do, some people, somebody is gonna be saying, um, I'm gonna do it later and then somebody gonna pop up, they go, oh my god, yep, you should did it early. You should have done it early, yes, now you gotta, now you gotta, now you gotta, oh, now you gotta wait. So check this out y'all, this is this is pretty cool, see, see people look at this because they like Oreo cookies, I look at this from a business perspective. Oreo cookies is celebrate one hundred and tenth anniversary, yeah, a hundred and ten. Oh, that's that's what you call longevity, that's what you call legacy, a hundred and tenth anna- a hundred and tenth birthday. Right, right, so to me, I'm looking at that from a business perspective, I would only wish to. Build something that's gonna last a hundred and ten years away from now, now let me just say this, that being said. My daughter and I, my daughter and I were talking about this this morning, right, because we've been talking about the metaverse a lot, so. I can't go into all what the metaverse is right now, but go Google it, it you still probably will understand once you Google it, because she and I were talking about it yesterday. And um, and um, 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 she was like, but I don't understand it, this was yesterday. And so she called me this morning, said, I think I finally figured out the metaverse, now I already know what the metaverse is. But what what we were talking about was, why would I go and pay a thousand dollars for a digital pocketbook that I can't touch? Right, that's what we were talking about and it didn't make sense, so she went back and did some research. And so she came back this morning and she said, the metaverse, you could you could go into, let's say Louis Vuitton, right, if you all about the name brand and all that stuff. You can go into a digital Louis Vuitton store. You have a chance to see the Louis Vuitton that you want, the bag that you want, you know, it'll turn around in three D, all that good stuff. And then you order it and they send it to your house, right out the, right out the virtual store, so that's called the metaverse, right? And so she's like, oh, I get it, but her thing was, if you are in the metaverse, if somebody comes into your metaverse, can they kill you? And I was like, well, they can't kill you in real life, because you're not inside the metaverse physically, you know, your your metaverse person is there, but you're not really there. And so she's like, oh, I said, not only that, people can't just come into your metaverse without you letting them in, they can't just come in. It's kinda like having a key, you gotta have a key or invite to come into my metaverse, but I said all that to say. A hundred and ten years from now, good morning would not have been the metaverse, because that's where we'll be going. You know, so Oreo cookie is celebrating a hundred years here on earth, you know, a hundred and ten years from now, good morning would not have been the metaverse. So it probably is space for real, like, we probably be on another planet, like for real, because there are other planets that they're trying to colonize and. You know, prayerfully what I build, you know, my 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 uh, my the next generation of little means could take it to space. You know, I'm setting it up for that way, that's for sure, you know, but think about creating something that's a hundred and year, a hundred and ten years still here. And people still love it, like I like Oreos, you know, I'm not a uh sweets junkie, but I'll eat Oreos, somebody put it in front of me. Do I go to the store and buy Oreos, no, I don't, I don't go to the store and buy any cookies, I do not. Every now and again, I buy a Reese's cup or a Kit Kat or maybe a Hershey's, but I'm talking about that's every now and again, not very often at all. I do not, I'm not a sweets person, I'm not a bread person, um, but if somebody has some Oreos and I can put my hand on them, I'll eat some. I surely will, alright, you want a chance to win some Super Bowl tickets, yes, yes, you can, you got a chance, but here's a chance. You gotta donate some blood, you gotta donate blood, so the American Red Cross blood donation supply is critically low, critically low. And the organization Red Cross is asking people to strongly consider donating um some blood. The organization is offering blood and plasma donors, the chance to win tickets to the Super Bowl and a home theater package. So blood donations typically weigh during the holiday season, but the shortage is being compounded. By the ongoing challenges from the coronavirus pandemic according to the Red Cross, so if you want a chance to win. Um, some Super Bowl tickets, yes, you got a chance, the Super Bowl gonna be in LA this year, yep, it's gonna be LA, so it's gonna probably be nice weather. The package includes round trip airfare, entry to the to tailgate party, three night hu- hotel accommodations. Plus five hundred dollar gift card for other expenses, so you get the ticket, the trip, you get it all, you get the whole package, but you gotta go give some blood. You gotta give some blood, so um, you could do a blood donation um, January seventeenth from eh from ten AM to three PM. At the Atlanta Marriott Peachtree Corners, that's located at four seventy five Technology Parkway in Peachtree Corners. On January twenty seventh, from nine AM to two thirty PM, Peachtree Corner Baptist Church, forty four eighty Peachtree Corner Circle. Um, January thirtieth, uh, ten AM to four PM, Ishmali, Jama- okay, I'm about to mess this up. Ishmali, Jam- Jamaica, Jamaica kinda, I'm messing that up, sorry y'all. That's in North Cross located at forty four oh five International Boulevard in North Cross, alright, so listen. If you want to get all these locations, again, go to the patch dot com and click in um, Red Cross, the American Red Cross. But if you want a chance to win the Super Bowl, you gotta give up some blood, they need some of your blood to get the, to make that happen. Alright, I'm going to a song, I'll be right back after this song to bring you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back, it's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Um, State Senator did um, will pursue his legislation, excuse us, school board, not to make Gwinnett. To make Gwinnett School Board elections nonpartisan, yeah, he said he's gonna move forward this. After looking at the possibility of changing school board elections across Georgia to make them nonpartisan. State Senator Clint Dixon, a rep- uh Republican from Buford says um. She says he will not pursue the statewide change, but he will, he will introduce legislation specifically targeting Gwinnett County. Specifically, he gonna, he's not gonna go statewide, but he is gonna pursue legislation that's gonna target Gwinnett County. This Dixon confirms his plans with the Daily Post on Monday, uh, he said his plan, he plans to introduce a bill within the next few weeks. To switch the Gwinnett School Board from partisan to nonpartisan elections, although he added that there are some details that need to be sorted out first. So he is moving forward that, you know, that was like, uh, he put out that legislation. Uh, late last year about the school board as well as the commissioners, where he was trying to add uh, five more seats to the commission. And the commissioners were fighting that, now speaking of fighting that, I had an interesting conversation with um. Yesterday, as a matter of fact, with commissioner, was it yesterday, no, it wasn't yesterday, it was day before yesterday. I had an interesting conversation with Commissioner Jasper Watkins, who is uh, who is the. Uh, uh, he is the commissioner for my district, which is District Three, and what he said to me was, and he was very, he was very. Um, he was a little aggravated, I'm gonna say, he was a little bit upset and aggravated because he said, we're here fighting for the people of Gwinnett County. And when they re- redrew these lines and all and wanted to bring on more commissioners, we wanted to explain to you why. This was not in your best interest and people didn't show up, so he was a little bit annoyed. Because they had these town halls to explain to you, why it's important for you to vote against this, why it's important for you to make noise against these lines being redrawn. And adding more commissioner, uh commissioners to the commission, and he said he was disheartened because nobody showed up to those meetings. Like out of a, out of a community of almost a million people, I wanna say he said maybe across all of the meetings they had, and I think it was about five. It was ma- maybe, maybe thirty people across all five, which if you average that out is about six people a meeting. Out of a community of 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 almost a million people, and so he was a little bit disheartened because of that, but and I said to him, you know. Maybe people just don't understand, so. As a community outreach partner, as Gwinnett, this this show right here, Gwinnett, Good Morning Gwinnett is a community outreach partner. That I'm making myself, no one said that to me, I just feel like I have a platform. And I'm gonna use that platform to educate people as much as I can, whether it be on business, community. Or 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 government official, uh government uh leadership, that's what I'll do. And so I said to him, I said, listen, you give me the information, I'll put it out there. Me personally, I think each time they had a town hall, I found out the day of the town hall, which for me is kinda difficult because I told you. My schedule is pretty much laid out weeks in advance, so if I'm not actively going to the county website to see what's happening, I'm gonna miss some things. Now, that being said, I realize in order for me to be a good community partner. I need to make sure that I know what's going on in the community, so now I have to go to the county website to see what's going on. To see if I could show up at some of these events to make sure that you guys know what's going on, because you may not have even thought about going to the county website to see what's happening. And so that was my, that was my thing to him, like, do they know, he was like, yeah, they know, I I don't know if they knew or not, but what I do know is is that. Moving forward, I will be proactive and finding out more about what's happening with the county, especially when it comes to voting. And voters' rights and things like that, and anything small business, anything small business and entrepreneurship, I'm gonna make sure I do my best. To get that information and bring it to you guys, community, uh activism, I'll do my best to get that information, bring it to you guys, now here's the thing y'all. I can do my best, but you gotta put forth your own effort, because what he was saying was is that when we, he and the commissioners, the other four commissioners. When we go to these, when we go to fight for on your behalf, if you don't show up to help us fight. It's like just us fighting in a sea of people, like you have to help them fight for what's good for you. You know, you know, it's so funny because I remember, I was remembering talking to another, um, I don't know, I think it was a candidate, a political candidate, I'm like, why would you wanna do this? Because I feel like, I understand, you know, um, I understand that some people just have a heart for the community. But boy, the community will, the community will let you down, and so I said to him, and I wasn't making excuses, I just, when I found out information, it's like today. Like I come, I go through my news sources, which is Gwinnett Daily Post, AJC and and the Patch, right, I go through my news sources. And I pull top stories that interest me and I put them out there as a podcast and that's what I talk about. If I don't know about those things until the day of and my schedule is set, like for next week, my schedule is pretty much set already. So I don't have any wiggle room to make things happen because my calendar is already filled up for the following week, that's my schedule. But I said to, I said to him, I will do my best to make sure that I go to the county website to see what's happening, so that you guys. Could you hold these town halls, I know, I could talk about it, so other people could know this, listen to this show. So that's really important, so you know, um, um, just having the chance to talk to him was, you know, it was, it was kinda refreshing because we got to see. I got a chance to see, you know, some of the things that he was saying, that they were trying to help, help push in the community. And they weren't getting a lot of love, and one of the other things he said was there was, they got a two hundred billion dollar budget, right? A two billion dollar budget, I think he said, it was a billion, whatever it was, it was a billion, and he was saying that no one came out to talk about how to spend that money. No, 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 let me not say no one, not a lot of people came out, I think he said it was eight people. That came out and said, hey, this is what you should do with that money, now, here's the thing. I think I probably would have gone had I known, but if 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 I'm not reading a news site. Or if I read it this week and it's next week and I'm thinking, okay, I already got something on the calendar, kinda like, okay, maybe not. But I I, I would be more conscious and I would do a better choice, um, I'd do a better job at finding out about these events. And attending as many as I can and bringing them back to you so you have the opportunity to know about them as well, so. You know, that all, that was, that all, this this conversation right here happened because, um, they were fighting. Um, they were fighting Clint Dixon, who was trying to add five more commissioner seats to the seat and they wanted to. They wanted the 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 community to give their input about why it was a horrible decision. And nobody showed up, nobody really showed up for the town halls, only a few people, so that's why I had to, you know, I had to kinda talk about that a little bit because. Commissioner Watkins was, he was disheartened and I get it, you know, I get it, so, but we gonna do a better job, just like I said to him, I would do a better job. Um, and making sure I get the information out, because I talk about these things on the show, but if I don't find out a about, about it until the day of. Nine times, nine times out of ten, I can't make it because my schedule is already booked, so from now on, I will go to the county site to see. You know, what's coming up and put that on my calendar, so I can come back and say, this is what's on the calendar, you know, this is why it's important that you go. Now, some of the things I may not know why it's important that you go, because I'm not in the political world like that, so I may not know. But if I don't know, what I will do is get a statement from these offices, is hey, why is this important that the community come out, you know, that's what I will do, so. Just look for more about that kinda stuff, um. The commission approved a four hundred thousand dollar settlement this week, um, there was a young man, his name was Demetrius Hollins. He was um attacked, he was assaulted by two white officers back in April two thousand seventeen. Um, he was stopped because of his license plate, he gets out of his car because they asked him to, when he gets out of the car, they punches him in the face. Puts him on the ground and then the other guy stomps him in the face, stomps him in the head, for no reason. No reason, but there was somebody with a smartphone videotaping the whole thing, you know, and I say to myself, what kind of people are these? They're savages, like I I, I just, so you stop somebody for a traffic stop, a traffic stop, you make him get out the car, then you punch him. And then you stump him, for no reason, savages, just savages, they're just savages, but they were fired. And I feel like they should have went to jail, they, I think one guy did go to jail for like six months or something, but then one guy got ten years probation, some nonsense. Had that been the other way around, it would have been something totally different, but I just feel like just savages, just monsters. Like you had no real reason to do what you did, someone caught the whole thing on videotape, I I don't wonder how they sit back, what what are they sitting back looking at their lives saying about themselves right now? Because one thing about catching yourself on videotape, it shows you who you really are, you can say, well, I'm not this, I'm not that, well, why'd you do this? Then you ask yourself, why do we do this, because I didn't have a real reason to do this, so why did, why would I do something like this? Like if he wasn't doing anything, you stopped him for a license plate, you asked him to get out of the car for a license plate, he gets out of the car. One officer punches him in the face after he gets out the car, they they put him on the ground, handcuff him, and then the other officer stumps him in the head. No reason, he's on the ground in handcuffs, he gets thumped in the head, savages, disgusting, they're savages. That's what they are, anyway, because of them being savages, he's gonna walk away with four hundred thousand dollars. Prayerfully, he has a good financial advisor that's gonna help him take that money and put it in places that's gonna make him more money, I'm just saying. You know, it's just, it's so crazy, because you know, you get people, oh my god, I'm not like that, yeah, you are, you are, yeah, you are. Now listen to this y'all, this is, now this right, same thing, just crazy, so. And some of these stories I just can't make up and this is one of them, I just, I gotta tell you, so it says, a suburban auto repair shop owner. Who paid a former employee his final paycheck, right, he got a final paycheck. He paid the guy, he paid him, his final paycheck, guess how he paid him, he gave him nine hundred dollars worth of pennies. Nine hundred dollars worth, why would you do that? Why, this this is the kinda stuff we're talking about, what would make you wanna give somebody nine hundred dollars worth of pennies? Anyway, he's been sued by the federal government, he should be sued, because that don't make sense, why would you do that? Ooh, I tell you boy, anyway, the US Labor Department filed a federal complaint against. Miles Walker, the owner of AOK Walker Auto Works in Peachtree City, claiming he violated the file labor, the fair labor standards. Act for not paying his employees an hourly wage or overtime according to the records. He paid him nine hundred dollars worth of pennies, that's so sad, you that mad, he was mad y'all, he was, how about you pay him what they supposed to be paid? He said, I've got plenty of pennies, I'll use it, ooh, listen, listen, listen to this. So last year in March, the Labor Department said Walker left a pile of ninety one thousand. Listen, listen, listen to this. So last year in March, the Labor Department said Walker left a pile of ninety-one thousand five hundred pennies in this person's driveway as his paycheck. Right. Ninety-one thousand five hundred pennies. That's ridiculous. That is just outrageously ridiculous. That's what I'm saying. Why? You took the time out to count out ninety-one thousand pennies? What kind of nut are you? I'm just saying. Y'all can say what you wanna say. There's some crazy people out here in this world. Like, who the heck wanna do that? I, that's one of them stories I just, okay, alright. Anyway, that's all I got for y'all today. I'm about to go to my last song because I'm telling you, it's some strangers, some strange folks out there in this world. The people might think I'm strange too, so I'm just saying. Alright, stay tuned. I'll be right back after this song to give you my inspiration for the day. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for your day, but before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration. And here goes. It says, um, coming together is beginning, is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. Ooh, let me say that again. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success. Harry Ford said that he was absolutely right. When you come together, that's the beginning. But here's the thing, you gotta stay together, right? And if you work together, that's gonna be a success. Now, what I would say about that is, when you, when you, when you, when you, when you decide to come together, come together with the right people. At least, at least vet the people first. Because sometimes you think it is the right person, but you don't vet them. You don't vet them because you're emotionally attached to that person. You don't wanna come together with people you're emotionally attached to because then if things don't work out, everything is a mess, right? So that's what I said earlier, hire people. Vet the people that you hire and bring it to your circle. I was on a call with a client yesterday. And, and they were saying that they're gonna make a large investment into six people, right? And I said to them, even though people say, I wanna do it, I wanna do it, I wanna do it, you might wanna do some kind of assessment to see if that person is worth you making an investment in. You wanna make a six thousand dollars investment in somebody, you might wanna vet them, like, really, really vet them. Because even though, let's, and I'll give you a prime example. I did a DISC assessment. My DISC assessment said I would be good as, I think, a social worker, a writer, an entertainer. That is so true. But it has taken me, it took me many, many years before I discovered that about myself. So I did all kinds of things. I went to school to be a paralegal. I went to college to be an accountant. I went to school to be an air traffic controller. Um, what else did I go to school for? I did go to school to become a web developer, which I do a lot of web development to this day, but that was years later. And so I did, went to school to do all these things, wasted a, I went to school to be a nurse. I went to school to be an X-ray technician. I went to college for all these things, right? None of those things were who I, who, who resonated with who I am in, in, uh, internally, right? So you wanna make sure that you vet people. Now, I was telling my client, I said, listen, just because that person say they wanna do it, they wanna do it, doesn't necessarily mean that's the right person for you to invest that kind of money and time into. It doesn't mean it. And so you wanna make sure that you vet people because even though they are, you need the help, you want the help, you need the camaraderie, you want the camaraderie, doesn't mean that those are the right people. Doesn't mean that you love them any less, they're just not the right people. And the way to do that is to really vet them. So you wanna make sure, yes, coming together is good. Staying together is progress. Working together and making that thing work is a success, but you can only do that with the right people. So all I got for you today, hope you learned something today. Listen, if you missed any episodes of the show, be sure to go to goodmorninggwinnett.com to listen to past episodes. There also, also, uh, follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett. Follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett and follow me on the Twitter at GM Gwinnett. If you listen to the show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars. And leave a comment and subscribe to the show as well. Share the show with your friends. My goal is to get to a million subscribers, a million downloads, a combination of the both. And I appreciate you for doing that. Share the show, share the show. Share it with at least one person will be, y'all, every day. One person that's subscribed to the show, that's gonna help my numbers, that's gonna help me. It's gonna help me in a lot of ways. And it's free. You don't gotta pay a dime to share the show. You ain't gotta pay a dime to download an episode. You ain't gotta pay a dime to listen to the full episodes. You ain't gotta pay a dime to like the episode, subscribe to the episode, to comment on the episode. Costs you nothing but a minute. Not even a minute. Download the app from the App Store. There's a Good Morning Gwinnett app in the App Store. If you got an Android phone or Apple phone, download that app for me. All of these things are gonna help me reach that one million, one million mark. That's, that's important to me for a lot of different reasons. Uh, one, I wanna make, I wanna see, can I do it? I think I can do it. I, I believe I can do it, but I need your help in doing it. So make sure to do that. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing. Listen, y'all stay safe out there, right? You see me sniffling. I know y'all tired of hearing me sniffle. Hopefully, I won't be sniffing tomorrow. But y'all stay safe out there and God willing, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM. Until next time, my friend, thank you again for listening. I love you all so much. Thank you again for listening. I'll be back again tomorrow. Till next time, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noise media dot U S.